Call the meeting order. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Here.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Here.
Quorum has been established. Next on the agenda on item, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda, citizens' comments. This is the portion of the meeting where the UDA citizens can address the board with any of your comments, questions, or concerns. We welcome you to the mic at this time. You have three minutes to which to make your statements or inquiries. Be mindful that you may not receive a response from your inquirers here this evening. Also be mindful that you have three minutes. And last, I request that you address all comments and questions to the chair. The agenda is now open for citizens' comments. Second call, citizens' comments. Last and final time for citizens' comments. Seeing or hea- excuse me, seeing or hearing none, moving the agenda. Next on the agenda, consent agenda items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the July 18th, 2018 regular meeting and the July 25th, 2018 board workshop.
So move.
Moved by Dr. McFadden to approve the minutes of the July 18th, 2018 regular meeting and the July 25th, 2018 board workshop. Is there a second?
Support.
Second, Ms. Escalante. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call the roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Next, approval of bills for payment. Chair would understand the motion. Excuse me. Mr. Brewley?
I would move them.
Moved by Mr. Brewley to approve the bills for payment. Is there a second?
Support.
Second, Ms. Walker. Any questions, comments, discussion on the motion on the floor? Mr. Brewley?
We had a meeting of the finance committee and we went over all the bills in detail and went through them and found them all to be in order.
Thank you. Any additional questions, comments, concerns? Hearing or seeing none, call the roll, please.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. I'm going to skip over agenda item number six and move to agenda item number seven. Mrs. Davis?
Thank you. Henry Ford School Age Health Center has been in our district for about three, going on four years now. And one of our own alumni, Ms. Jill Yure, has been very instrumental in making sure that we were able to get a center here. And she continues to work very closely with our staff and students with the center. And she has some more exciting information that she wants to share tonight. So with that, Ms. Yure.
Come on down.
Do we have time to put this in and do it with PowerPoint or would you rather do it without it at this point?
I think we can.
Mine is set up already, you can use that.
I choose. I choose. And then I'll come over there and look. Can I stand here or does it matter?
As long as you have the microphone, I think that's helpful. You can move, well, you can move that.
Yeah, you can. That might just got moved.
Can I ask whether this one's in their packet, Ms. Davis?
Yeah.
Okay. So, thank you. I'm just going to give you an update. I came in front of the board a couple months ago and told you that we did receive some funding for a program. And I'm just going to give you an update on where we are with that. So, it's called I Choose. It's a PowerPoint. I'm sure you're able to find it. So not to conf- thank you, that's it. So thank you for the introduction, Superintendent Davis. And she did talk about the health center and I appreciate that. And the health center is run by Henry Ford Health System. And I know I was instrumental in bringing it here to the school. So my job at Henry Ford McComb Hospital is to do health promotion in the community. So it's a little different than the health center, but we work closely together. So tonight I want to talk to you about a program that we're calling I Choose. And it's a lifestyle intervention program. Perfect. For youth. So before I can talk to you about that, I have to talk to you a little bit about something health-related, which is diabetes. So two in five adults will be diagnosed with diabetes in their lifetime. Not only does that bring with it consequences of diabetes, but it also raises your risk for other diseases such as heart disease, I can't even read the screen from here, but other, what we call comorbidities that will exist with your diabetes. And also diabetes is expensive. You can see on there what it costs an individual for a year in health costs if they have diabetes. So in adults and with youth, we can predict if you are prediabetic. So I know you understand already that that's a big deal. So prediabetes is common and it's reversible. You can prevent or delay those with prediabetes from developing type 2 diabetes with simple lifestyle changes. Approximately 84 million American adults, one out of three, have prediabetes. Ninety percent of those people with prediabetes don't even know they have it. And a lifestyle change program can help you make the changes and make them stick. And through a lifestyle change program, you can lower your risk of developing type 2 diabetes by as much as 58 percent. So those are proven research-based facts we have when it comes to adults. So with adults, we have diabetes prevention programs that are meant to lower your risk of developing diabetes. So type 2 diabetes in youth has become epidemic. More and more kids are being diagnosed with type 2 diabetes. It used to be something that kids never got. We used to call it old age onset diabetes. It's something you develop later in life. But now, most kids are developing it in their early teens. So it's important that we change things now so that they won't develop diabetes. So in addition, in addition to those youth who have lifestyle habits that are making them be at risk, and, you know, among youth, we would talk about this differently, but we're all adults in this room. So we're talking about those kids who are overweight or obese, that's a primary factor. But then also having a family member with type 2 diabetes, being born to a mom who was gestational diabetic, being of certain ethnicity, et cetera. So those are risk factors in youth. So Henry Ford McComb collaborated with what we call GDAC, which is Greater Detroit Area Health Council. And we collaborated and wrote a proposal to the Michigan Health Endowment Fund to develop a lifestyle intervention program for youth. There's already programs for adults, but we need to take those same underlying principles and make them appropriate for youth. In my line of work at Henry Ford, we work with youth every day in the community. So I have dietitian, registered nurses, educators, and that's their specialty. So we wrote a proposal and they funded us. So Henry Ford is collaborating with GDAC for this lifestyle intervention program. Let's see, this is the flyer, a piece of the flyer you have in your packet that went home to families. So we're starting to introduce the fact that there's going to be an I Choose program. We know that we want the kids who are at greatest risk, but we're also smart enough to know that the youth here are not going to be interested in being part of a program if it labels them as unhealthy, or if it means they're going to get, they're going to get their weight measured and perhaps get their blood drawn, things like that. So we need to be sensitive to that and make it be something that is fun for youth. We want them to feel that it's an empowerment program. And, and it is. It's about making good choices. So we've kind of latched onto that tagline, I Choose, and I think you'll hear it and see it in the school. I know that we, we have those silicone wristbands that say I Choose that we're going to give to every student. We want them to think about where will their choices take them, in a much broader focus than just their health. But I know that youth in general don't think about what their life will be like 20 years from now, they're only thinking about the next 20 minutes. So kids wouldn't perhaps choose this program like adults might choose to be in a diabetes prevention program. So that's going to be our biggest challenge, is making it fun and something that is going to be, that those that are in the program might feel that they were chosen to be part of that program for a good reason. So there's a lot that comes with this that we are talking about, things that we can bring that'll benefit the whole school, like a motivational speaker and some banners and some cool giveaways, all those things that kids like. So just some bullet points about the program. It is a one-year lifestyle change program. So it's a, it's a big commitment for youth. Not only will they get weekly sessions during the school year, but will also be meeting in the summer. They will have measurements that will include height, weight, blood pressure, and for some kids, lab values. And that's one reason why we chose to pilot it in Mount Clemens, because there is a health center here. So if there are students that don't have a primary care provider, we have a health center where they can get that done. And it takes the focus off of the medical piece. When we're in front of the youth and teaching them about lifestyle choices, we're not also making them get on the scale. They're going to do all that at the health center. So it sort of separates that a little bit. It does consist of 16 core sessions followed by six months of post-core sessions. Those are what is outlined by the CDC for adults, and we just took that and used it as a template for youth. The topics you can guess would be associated with nutrition choices, physical activities, stress management, and those behavior cues that help us make decisions. So there is a behavioral health aspect to it. It's very well documented, diabetes prevention. You can go online, probably could spend three days reading about it. Our goal is to have 20 students from the middle school age group and 20 students from the high school age group, two different groups that we, that we will run within the school community. We might not get 20, we would never take more than 20 because of the relationship that you develop along the way with the students. Because it is youth, we need to pull in the families. So periodically, we'll be doing family nights where we invite the whole family and there'll be something that is beneficial to everybody. It might be a cooking class, or a grocery store tour, or let's go see what it's like to eat out, and how do you order, and things like that. There will be an advisory group that will include representation from the school administration along with Henry Ford, the health center, others. And we'll meet on a regular basis and make sure everybody has input into what we're doing. We did write an article for our Henry Ford McComb Hospital Physician Newsletter, so if somebody says they saw it in print, that is true. The title was "A Youth Diabetes Prevention Program Pilot in Mount Clemens." And I do have a copy of the article here. Since we partnered with GDAC and received funding from the Michigan Health Endowment Fund, I'm not sure if I gave them credit, people from Delta Dental approached GDAC and they said, "We're really interested in preventing diabetes. Maybe we don't all naturally make that connection between good health and oral health." But at Delta Dental, they do, and they want to promote good health all around, whether it's eating fruits and vegetables, or giving up sugary beverages, those things. And so they wanted to be a part of the program. So they gave us some funding also. So we know this is a really important subject. It is, it is on the cusp of, it's just going to blow up for us. So it is an important subject and people do want to see it happen, and happen well. I mean, it's all about having the outcome, so I'm not going to kid you about that. And then I just didn't want to forget to talk about the tagline, I Choose, and where will your choices take you? So at this point, when we're trying to let the community know that we're going to have such a program, we want to keep the at-risk criteria top of mind for us, but we want to promote it in a different way, about making good choices for your life overall. Because we don't want it to have the stigma attached that it could have. And so I think that is the end of my presentation. Just wanted to give you a brief overview and that's it.
Thank you.
Any questions, Ms. Yure?
I have one.
I don't know what to start with.
Hey, this is your opportunity. This is a pilot, first-year pilot, correct? What are the groupings that you're going to use to determine whether or not it's successful? And if it's successful, how do we move forward?
Perfect.
If it's not, do we tweak it and then, you know, run it out again?
So the reason I'm using the word pilot is because the CDC does not have a youth-based program. They have an adult-based program. And you can become a qualified provider of the adult-based program if you can show classes and measurement outcomes and so on. So we're hoping that they like our curriculum and they consider that to be the curriculum. So it's a pilot because it's not research-based at this moment. I would like, so for the adult program, it has to do with attendance and weight loss and goal trackers. For youth, I don't think we're going to see the weight loss like we do, like we strive for with adults. We know that youth grow differently and we watch their BMI, et cetera. For youth, we'd be happy if their BMI plateaued rather than kept on the increase. I mean, weight loss is always acceptable, don't get me wrong. But to answer your question specifically, we're going to do pre and post interview-guided questions about choices, about nutrition choices, physical activity. These youth are going to be having physical activity come, come to them at each class. They're going to be doing physical activity, they're going to be encouraged to track their minutes, they're going to get involved in nutrition choices and cooking and so on. So we hope to see their answers change from the beginning to the end. And that probably will be our biggest talking point when it comes to outcomes.
Now, do we have any specific students that we have earmarked?
So we can't really like handpick them by sight, but because there are risk factors you can't see, I don't know if you have family history and so on. But we do know, like, I knew when I wrote the proposal to do it here, I knew there was enough of a target population. How did I know that? We do have the health center, they will be able to refer patients. So that was a real plus for me. In our article to the physicians, we asked for referrals, and we've already had our phone ringing off the hook. But for this pilot, it's going to be Mount Clemens students. But we know that there, as soon as we work some of these bugs out, you know, we need to find other avenues to offer this type of program. Did I answer your question?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, yeah. So will we pick them? We, we want them to self-refer. So we'll be at the back-to-school bash. We'll have a big poster that says I Choose. Hopefully, they saw it in their enrollment packet, they'll want to come talk to us. Our nurses there will do a five-question interview with the parent or the student or both, and we'll get their contact information and follow up with them later. And we'll reward them for coming to the table, of course. So we hope to get some referrals at that opportunity, and then the health center, I think, is going to be really key.
Thank you.
Anything else? Yes.
You mentioned that you have a dietitian working with you?
Mm-hmm.
If we can organize it within our district, would that dietitian be able to look at our food offerings and suggest maybe two that we should discontinue and two that we should include?
Sure. So we would love your food service person to be part of our advisory group, they are key. Not only do we want to change the lives of these individual students, but we want to change the community of the school in ways that'll make it easier for them to make the healthy choice.
So if the superintendent can facilitate, you know, without trampling on anyone?
Right.
You would have a dietitian available just to sort of take a look at us and sort of give us a little review and, you know, say, "This is a good suggestion," and maybe take that away, but put this in and that sort of thing?
There's an evidence-based program that we use with many schools called Smarter Lunchrooms. So we'd probably start with something like that. Like, which of these things do you already have? What might you do?
So you could act as a consultant and help people?
Yes, for sure.
So I think we should try to do that.
One thing about Delta Dental that might hopefully get you excited, they have a grant program, and they weren't sure they were going to offer it. And in Michigan schools, they did it last year, but they will, if the school wants it, they will bring the program to this school. And it's their water filling stations. So they give the school water filling stations and all the students bottles to refill their water. So we would eliminate all the concerns with the drinking fountains and all of that. So I was-
We accept.
You accept. So I was pretty excited about that. They are on board.
Wow.
So that was exciting.
Any additional questions?
I'll keep you posted.
Thank you very much, Ms. Yure. We look forward to promising reports from you.
Oh, thank you so much. I have your all my stuff.
Next, item eight, the blueprint presentation. Mrs. Davis?
All right, well, thank you. Tonight, we have Ms. Sarah Watson here with us. She is our MyXL facilitator, a strong partner assisting us with this process. I have spoken about MyXL Blueprint over the months, and our district has been involved with it since October of last year. And we have been working diligently with Ms. Watson, and she's here tonight to go over, give you an overview of what MyXL Blueprint is all about and tell you about the, this professional development coming up in October that she will go over with you. But we're excited to have her and, as a partner with this endeavor. So with that, Sarah.
Thank you. I must say, though, that I'm the newest partner. You have been partnering with your ISD facilitators-
Yes.
...for a few years, and, and they are also going through the blueprint. I'm going to pass this out. So they're going through the certification program as well. So maybe very much of the-
We can do that.
All right, you'll pass one of those around to everyone. Thank you. You probably want to move to someplace where you can see and bring something to write with. I should probably mention that I spent a lot of time teaching in the classroom, so I have a hard time turning that part off. So just quickly, an overview of what I will speak about today. I'd like to talk about our purpose, and when I say "our," I mean the purpose of everyone affiliated with Mount Clemens Public Schools. I'd like to tell you a little bit about what the blueprint is all about, and let you know where we are in our installation process, where we're headed next, tell you about our school board series, and answer any questions that you may have. So we'll start with an introduction. As Mrs. Davis mentioned, my name is Sarah Watson and I work with the MyXL statewide field team. And what I do, I, I help districts with systemic reconfiguration by installing the blueprint. I'm a teacher by trade, spent some time in administration, mostly in urban education, and have been working with the blueprint for about three years now. So my question to you is, who are you and what do you do as a member of this school board? So I can see your names, but if you could just tell me what you do as a member of this school board, it would be great. Where should we start?
Well, I guess me. All right. I'm Janine Walker, and what do I do? I'm the treasurer of the school board.
All right. Well, thank you, Janine.
I'm Christina Escalante. I'm the newest member of the school board, but not for long. And I'm currently the secretary.
All right.
I'm Glenn Voorhees. I was the treasurer before Janine, and I'll be going off the school board in December.
Well, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Ed Brewley? And I'm, two committees.
Okay, thank you. Any gentlemen over here?
General President McFadden, the vice president of the school board. Please.
Okay.
I'm Earl Rickman, I'm president of the board. And our role as the board is to be visionaries of the district and we govern the district.
I like it. I like it a lot. Thank you. So you were given two post-its, and if you will, quickly just jot down on the yellow a major challenge that you feel your school district is currently facing. And on the pink post-it, just jot down a quick goal that you have for the district. You will not be graded on spelling or grammar, so just jot that down really quickly. A challenge and a wish, a goal that you have for your district.
The yellow paper is for-
The yellow is for a challenge that you have.
One.
Just one. You only get to pick one.
And if any, there's a wish list?
Just one wish that you have for your district this year.
Got you.
And then, if, when I play this video, if Ms. Davis, if you would collect those for me, I would greatly appreciate it.
All right.
So I have a quick video about purpose and why we are here, so I hope that you enjoy it, and I hope the volume is working all right. Robin tells me it is.
I'm not hearing it.
Glenn, get it right on your paper.
Oh, we got it. Here it is.
How do I know? A lot of people, when they think of the phrase, "How do I know?", they always want to put the "what" behind it. How do I know what I'm supposed to do? The question that you really should ask is, how do I know why I'm here? Because when you know your why, your what becomes more clear and more impactful. If you know, like, for instance, people know that I do comedy, but that's what I do. My why is to inspire people to walk in purpose. So I can do comedy, I can write books, I can be in a movie, because all of it is motivated by my why. In fact, I have a new, a new web series out called Michael Jr. Break Time. We probably just did the sixth episode, it's on YouTube. So every single Wednesday at 3:00, we drop a new episode on YouTube of Michael Jr. Break Time. What it is, is it's me, I travel around the country and I do stand-up comedy, in case you're, you know. And in the middle of my comedy set sometime, I'll stop and just talk to my audience. And we've been filming this, and it's, you know, it's, it's pretty cool. So we're in Winston-Salem, I'm going to show you a clip from Winston-Salem. And I'm just talking to this guy in the audience, and he tells me that he's a, a musical instructor at a school. So I was like, "All right, you're a musical instructor, you know, can you sing? Let me hear you sing a song." So this is what happened at the last episode of Michael Jr.'s Break Time. Check it. Say, musical director?
Yes, sir.
All right, so, um, let me get a couple, let me get a couple bars of, like, Amazing Grace. Can you do the first part of that? Go ahead.
Amazing grace, how sweet the sound that saved a wretch like me.
Wow. That girl can sing. You know what I'm saying? Now, what you give me the version is if your uncle just got out of jail, you got shot in the back when you was a kid. I'm just saying, let me see the hood version real quick, if you know it, it's heard in the pop-up, just see if that exists. Let me see what you got.
Amazing grace, how sweet the sound that saved a- the sound that saved a wretch like me. But now, when I'm found, but blind, but now I, I sneeze.
Okay, um, here's what I want you to catch. The first time I asked him to sing, he knew what he was doing. The second time, he knew why he was doing it. When you know your why, your what becomes more impactful because you're walking towards or in your purpose.
So this little girl in this picture here was born to a teenage mom. And this goes back to that whole idea of why. Which means for this little girl, the following statistics applied to her. She was 50% more likely to repeat a grade. Kids like her have a graduation rate of 67% compared to 81% of those born to older parents. She was 22% more likely to become a teen mother than those born to older parents. The poverty rate for children like her was and still is around 78%. 60% of mothers like hers do not graduate high school. And only 5% of young teen mothers like hers complete at least two years of college by age 30. And only 2% earn a degree. This is her mom. She had her baby while she was in her fourth foster care placement. She was on public assistance and lived on her own by the age 16. She attended five high schools. She graduated on time when her daughter was almost two years old. She graduated nursing school when her first daughter was 11. By this time, still unmarried and single, she had another daughter that was three years old. She raised two daughters in severe poverty, but was lucky, lucky enough to live on the outskirts of a high-performing school district. Those daughters both have graduate degrees and successful lives. And I am that little girl all grown up with my own two daughters. So this story is my why. I told you that my name was Sarah Watson and that what I do is systemic reconfiguration. But this is why I do systemic reconfiguration within school districts. Because had I not ended up where I ended up and on a school bus and given free lunch and all those services that I didn't even understand until I was all grown up being an educator myself, I don't know, I may have been one of those statistics. Instead, my younger sister, who is an attorney, myself, with more than one graduate degree, are statistical anomalies. So what I'd like you to do now is to take a look at one of these pictures. These are students from your school district. As you look at these faces, I, I hope that you're reminded of your why, of why you are here and why you are serving on this school board. Take a break from thinking about all of those challenges and all of those wishes and all of the, the steps you go through to be a member of this school board. And remember why you're here to begin with. And on the back of those pictures, you'll see a little bit more of their story. Now, I don't know which kids they are. I, I made some phone calls to the people on our Blueprint Leadership Network and I said, I need some pictures of some kids. Completely random sample. I just need to know what grade level they're in. And then I pulled the data. So on the back of those pictures, you'll see something that's related to the data for that child's grade level. It's not good. I have two more pictures. These are my daughters. They're pretty cute. They're pretty cute. This one is going into the first grade. And what I was able to write about her is that she attends a district that has a 92% graduation rate with 84% enrollment post-secondary education. I had to look it up today. I didn't even know it was that good. She can read and all of her friends can read and she's six. This daughter, she's going into the fifth grade. And her school outperforms the state on almost every standardized test. She attends a public school. Her education is completely free. I don't even share her own field trips because I'm working. I don't. But her free education will unlock any door that she chooses in life. I live an hour from here. And there are school districts in my, in my neighboring towns exactly like yours. And it's not okay that the stories on the back of my own children's pictures are different. Because every child should have stories like this. And that is why I believe in this work that we're doing with the Blueprint. So as, as the speaker, Michael Junior, said, all of his stuff's really funny. You should look it up. But when you know your why, your what does become more impactful because you are walking toward that purpose. Now, how do we as a school district get there? I'm a firm believer that it is the Blueprint. So these next slides will tell you a little bit about what it is that we're doing. It's not enough time to tell you what you need to know. That's why there's a little something I'll tell you about at the end. But I'm just going to quickly go through some of the components so that you can see the work that we're doing behind the scenes. We start, and you can follow along on your picture if you'd like. You have the filled-in picture. This is the, this is it being built. If you are imagining it as, as an aerial view. This outer ring right here is the foundation. And that's where this district as a team, the Blueprint Leadership Team, that meets once a month, has really spent a lot of time, probably more time than any other district I've worked with. But I think it's been necessary and we're not done yet. But it's making sure that Mount Clemens schools are anchored in a culture of collective responsibility that is collegial, it's collaborative, and it's professional. Additionally, we want to make sure that it is grounded in a safe, orderly, and respectful environment for our students. The next piece you'll see, just filled in in that little white there, and looking at your challenges and wishes, it's interesting because they fall into three categories pretty much. And both yellow and pink, both heavily around resources, supplies, finances. That would be in this area. So we talk about equitable allocation of district resources based on student need. We also talk about strategic school design. We want to make sure that there's equitable allocation of resources based on student needs. Equitable does not necessarily mean equal. The first thing that we did was we established a district network. That's this part up here, that, that large circle. That's a driver. That's, that's the group of people that will drive this work. If you think about any vehicle, you can have all the greatest systems in the world, but if you don't have somebody to drive it, it won't go anywhere. So that's what we've really established. Within that district network, you'll see there are four boxes. Those are district-level systems that we will install. I think the one on the left probably says talent management. That's where we talk about really the placement of your talent that you currently have. 10 years ago, we may, we may have said hiring and recruiting. Now, we think about it more in terms of strategic placement of what we do have and how to coach and build their strengths. We also look at the instructional infrastructure. This year, we will be looking at developing visions for high-quality, subject-specific instruction, K-12. Every student that walks through the doors of Mount Clemens Community Schools deserves to get the education that will come out in that vision that we are going to write. You will also see the Intense Student Support Network. The program that you spoke about earlier falls right into that. That's where we tackle, and it's actually the next thing we're going into, that's where we tackle coming up with a vision that addresses students' non-academic needs. How are we making sure that we are addressing their socu-, their social, emotional, physical, nutritional needs to make sure that those are not creating barriers to education? And lastly, up there, you'll see a leadership network. That's where we will work specifically with your leadership team to be able to help your superintendent specifically and other central office administrators support building leaders as they grow in their practice. But the districts can't drive all of the work. There's another driver involved in this game, which happens a little bit later on, and those are building networks. So each building will have its own team. And if we think about traditional school improvement teams, in theory, those are great. But that work is often happening after the fact. And so if we can leverage the passion and the talent of the people who are serving on those and kind of repurpose that into this building network, we can look at teacher collaborative routines, instructional leadership routines, and how are we ensuring that our building principals are then able to leverage any district systems that we have put into place? Those three ovals in the middle, those are the driver systems. I know, there's district systems, there's building systems, there's drivers, and then there's driver systems. It's, it's a lot of vocabulary, but what you need to understand about those three, they really keep the whole machine working together at all times. The idea is that we're building systems. There, you, you won't see a, a brand name or a product anywhere on here because there's not any. It's not an initiative. It's not a product. There's zero dollars coming from Mount Clemens Public Schools to pay for this. What you see is this foundation where we put these systems in place so that regardless of who walks in the building door to be the principal or a classroom door to be the teacher or to be the superintendent of this district, Mount Clemens operates and does business this way. So those three driver systems, we, that you see up there, we have problem-solving driver system on the left, which is establishing a way to look at data consistently across the district. It's a protocol. I think we've settled on one. I won't say what it is just yet, but I, I think, I think with some ISD support, they're pretty good with, with using the collaborative learning cycle. But the problem-solving driver system is how we approach looking at all data. The middle one is the communications driver system. I don't know about your school district, but I hear that other school districts struggle with communication. So that's always a really important thing to address. And then finally, performance management driver system. That's where we start to look at, are we doing what we said we were going to do? We're measuring adult actions. If we say that we're going to improve student, teacher, and leader performance in a short amount of time, well, then we better be measuring it. So that's what happens in that section. It's a process. This is one way to look at it. Things happen in certain levels. We are currently in the mechanical level. And then we'll go on to the lobby level and we'll work through it. It's broken down into six levels and phases. Most systems, so for example, this is that instructional infrastructure system I mentioned with those visions for high-quality, subject-specific instruction, there are actually three floors. So during the first part, we're only looking at those visions and deciding what it is we want for our students here in this district. And then when we move on to the second floor, that's when we start living in curriculum and assessment. And that's where most districts have been living for years. It's, it's often believed that if we have the right curriculum that our neighboring district has, then we will get our neighboring district's results. But we're not our neighboring district. We're our district. We have our students that have their needs. And so to meet our vision, we need to look at what curriculum does this district need to meet those needs. And then on the third floor, for example, this one, then we move on to the Instructional Improvement Network. And that's where we start making sure that we're providing the right type of professional learning to anybody who's in the classroom or even providing intervention services. Are we providing the right type of professional learning to those people to be able to then deliver that curriculum and assessment that meets our vision for high-quality, subject-specific instruction? It doesn't all happen at once, unfortunately. We are building a plane in the air. This is just another graphic. I know you can't actually read it. I can't read those words either. But it's just, they're the shapes that you see on that graphic in front of you. So you can see that we are installing a driver and two driver systems in the mechanical level and three district systems. And then this again just goes through each level, showing you which things happen and when. We're laying those ground floors and building upon them, not working in silos. But what does that all mean for you, right? I, I'm assuming that you're not all teachers originally, right? So we don't speak the same language exactly. And sometimes people probably get up here and talk to you about M-Step and all kinds of other things with acronyms and you're just trying to keep up. But I don't speak school board, honestly. I know what it means to have a supportive school board and I know how vital that is. But I don't necessarily understand everything it is that you do. And you don't understand everything it is that I do. Luckily, MyExcel has created a series that's specifically designed for school board members. So I'm just going to read that to you because it's far away. But the Blueprint for Systemic Reconfiguration provides courageous local district leaders the roadmap to build and enhance their district infrastructure to powerfully support teaching, learning, and dramatic changes in student, teacher, and leader performance in a short amount of time. Led by directors of the MyExcel statewide field team, current and local district superintendents, and board members of blueprint-installing district, this series provides local district board members with a deep understanding of the Blueprint, how it impacts the district's efforts to increase student achievement, and most importantly, how a local board of education partners with its superintendent to lead this systemic reconfiguration to realize high levels of performance throughout the entire district. Guess how much it costs? Zero dollars. For you. I mean, some other districts might have to pay, but it's free for you. This, they've already gone through one cycle of it. And it was something that we developed as a result of school boards coming to us saying, we want to help. So they would come to some of our professional learning, but they just really didn't, couldn't make all of the connections. And after enough requests, they put this together and there have been many, many school board members that have come away with this really fully understanding how it is that they can then go back to their district and support the work that is happening there. Instead of maybe being a barrier. So I do have an invitation for you, if you are, well, you're all getting an invitation regardless. But if you are interested in attending the board series, I can certainly get you registered for that. It's the three, three different dates. The first set of dates is in October. And I have Mrs. Davis, we have that, the stack of them, right over there. Is that them? Yes. If you could hand everybody one of those, it'd be great. Here's the only catch. You can only take three because of that whole quorum thing. You can't, apparently you all. See, that's something I didn't know. You all can't meet in public places and hang out other than right here. More than three, if you got a time. More than three if you got a time. So we would be able to take three board members. Of course, your superintendent. And as I have promised your superintendent, if I have any school board members coming from this district, I will also attend. They're Friday evening. It's like a Friday evening, and they provide dinner and a couple hours of instruction. And then Saturday morning until the afternoon, I believe. So you will have all of that information there. It'll tell you to go to the website and register. But I would be more than happy to take care of that for you. My contact information can be found on there. I'll also leave some of my business cards. Please feel free to use them. I am here to fully support your school district. Are there any questions at this point? I mean, I hope there's a couple because it's your, you choose, I choose. You had, you got some questions.
How long has the blueprint been rolled out? And is it, some school boards like ours are in the beginning stage, and others are in another stage?
Great question. So the blueprint, in the way it is structured, our first districts are about a little over three years in. The school board connection is rather new. So this is something that we have just started to get a lot of requests for. So our cohort one and two, I actually have a district that I work with, that I've been with for three years. It's doing incredible, by the way. And then we have districts that are just joining. I just picked up a new district, Southwest Detroit, two weeks ago. So you're way further ahead than they are. But none of this work is new. It's all research-based. It's all been work that has been successful all over the nation. The difference is just that the blueprint, the researchers and writers that put it together, decided, okay, so we know that this works really well in the idea of talent management. We've seen schools have great success with this. Or we've seen schools have incredible success with instructional infrastructure when they do these things. It took all of those bodies of research and figured out how to put them all together to make a cohesive system. And there's so much research available on our website that you could be reading for weeks. But if you ever have specific questions about certain bodies of research, I'd be more than happy to get that for you.
For this three-part series for discussion following dates of attendance, is it recommended that the board member or the board members, because those are three of them, does that mean that we can go to different sessions, or we got to go all three?
It's recommended. I mean, they won't scold you if you don't go to all three. But they build on one another to deepen your level of understanding. So ideally, you would want the same three board members to attend the three sessions. I have had districts where one board member couldn't attend the second set of dates, so somebody went in in that spot. Then it's just, it won't make as much sense to them. But we will definitely be there to support anybody who is in attendance. And it's at the Crown Plaza in Lansing. And all of your lodging is also paid for. And they hand out free cookies at bedtime.
Not a healthy choice.
It's not, but I'd be happy to know that she also has milk with it. So you can get your cookie and get a glass of milk.
No, it's oatmeal and nuts and raisins. So it's always good. And sometimes even dark chocolate.
Yes.
Healthy stuff.
Yes. Anybody else have any further questions?
You said it's been around for three years?
This group in Michigan, in its current format, yes. I mean, the work that's been, this is research for the last 50 years.
Okay. But this blueprint that you're talking about has been around for three years?
Correct.
Is there any other state that's doing something similar to this?
Bits and pieces, but no, nothing like this. We started out, in our first cohort, we had 12 districts when I started partnering with MyExcel. In the beginning, there were only three people who actually worked for MyExcel. Everybody else, we were just partners that were working in ISDs all over with priority and focus school districts. And actually, that's how I met your ISD facilitators. I met them through this work years ago. They are also going through the program. And then now we are approaching 100 districts right now.
What's the average turnaround time for success?
It is so contextual. Based on the size, I always tease this team because you think you're such a small district, but you're actually my largest that I service right now. But we have districts, Pontiac and Saginaw, that are upwards of 7,000. And then I have one district that has 298 students, K-12. So their track looks incredibly different. It's designed originally to be, it was designed to be an 18 to 24-month, which was already really ambitious. But it's looking more like the three-to-five-year track because honestly, it's really difficult. If we didn't have to actually still have school going on, we could get this done. But we still have children to educate in the meantime, and that's a challenge.
So you said it's been very difficult and a challenge because the children are there to educate you during what, school period time? I mean, what was the challenge?
Just getting the groups of adults together and them having enough bandwidth to be able to sit down at the table and do the work that needs to be done while also still working full-time and still making sure that kids get what they need. I mean, it's hard. We meet one day a month as a large team here, and we do that for, it's an entire day we get together. Some districts meet every other week for an hour and a half. Some districts meet at 6:45 in the morning. Some meet after school, some meet during the day. Just depends on how much time that they can allocate and how creative they can get.
So you said getting the adults to get together to meet? You talking about the staff, the principals, the teachers? Or you talking about some other group?
No, the people working within the district.
The district. How long you been in, how long this program been over at Pontiac or Saginaw?
Saginaw is my district. I just had to hand them over recently. I started in Saginaw the end of 2015, but they didn't start installing until August 2016. And they have, they've made some serious strides. Pontiac has been on board a little bit longer, maybe about the same. Lincoln Park is one of the early adopters. So you can see the work that they've done in that district if you visit their website. What's really great about being a blueprint district, and I know Teresa can speak to this, that you don't compete there. It's not about keeping secrets and what's successful and what works. Somebody, I think, recently used the analogy, you would never hear a doctor say to another doctor, hey, I have a patient who I have to do this life-saving surgery on tomorrow, but this particular thing isn't something I do, and I know you've been really successful. Could you help me? You would never see a doctor say, no, sorry, not my patient. That just wouldn't be okay yet. For years, schools have done this. And when you become a blueprint district, it just doesn't happen. Two of my superintendents are a neighboring school district. They have school-of-choice kids from each other. They carpool to all the blueprint events because they understand that this isn't about us. This is about saving kids' lives. And so when I mention Lincoln Park, I could call that superintendent up on my way. Well, actually, I'm going to e-course tomorrow, but at home, whatever. I could call him up, and he would answer. And I could say, hey, I really need such-and-such, and he would deliver. Which is what we do.
And that's why the blueprint is so impactful. East Point has been on board, and we see what they've been able to do with their students in a short amount of time. I can't remember the one school district, the smaller one that, Brenda that I was working with. Anyway, she-
Oh, Akron-Faregros? My other, Diane?
Diane. Tell them a little bit about their district.
You can Google them, the Mackinac Center, who isn't typically the largest fan of public education. Just wrote an incredible article on their success.
And they were able to turn their school district around. And it truly is a partnership. It's not trying to see who could be the best. It's how can we all be the best? So it's a lot of camaraderie. And with Diane's district, now she's up for a national, like, blue ribbon school.
And they've had an increase of 15% the last two years in enrollment. They started school yesterday, and they're up 15% again this year.
And it's because of the quality education that the students and the parents know that they will get there. And again, it's not a competition thing. It's about how can we help our students? And I think the biggest challenge is, in any of the districts, is change. And people are afraid of change. And trying to get everyone on board to understand, it's not about the adults. If we take care of the students, the adults will be taken care of. So it's a total mindset change. And so working together to understand, we're here to help our students. We're here to make sure they get an education. And that's why I believe so deeply in the blueprint because it addresses all of those issues. It puts that elephant in the room, and we sit down and we talk with them instead of pushing them in a corner. We actually face what we need to discuss. Some good and some-
Oh, it's messy. It's really messy. I made it sound really beautiful. I hope I did. But it gets messy, and people don't see eye to eye. And it doesn't always go like we want it to. But it's the right work for the right reasons. And if you are interested at any point in speaking with any of the superintendents that we've mentioned, or you want to know more about districts similar to yours, please feel free to contact me. I can personally put you in contact with any of those superintendents. They'd be more than happy to come talk to you. I can say that.
Any other questions, comments?
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming.
Okay, moving right along. Agenda item nine, approving the hiring staff for fiscal year 2018, 2019. Approve the hiring of an elementary music teacher. Background and retirement necessitated the hiring of an elementary music teacher. Recommend to hire Alma Gail as an elementary music teacher effective August 28, 2018. Ms. Davis.
Thank you. As you have said, we did have one teacher to, that had to leave and that retired a long time standing. And we did honor him at the last board meeting, Mr. Brown. And so now, we do need to hire a replacement. So we are recommending that you approve Alma Gail. And she, the team interviewed her and was satisfied with her credentials. And we believe she's the right person to replace Mr. Brown.
Chair would entertain a motion relative to agenda item nine A. Recommend to hire Alma Gail as an elementary music school music teacher effective August 28, 2018.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we hire Alma Gail.
Moved by Mr. Voorhees.
Support.
Second, Ms. Walker. Any questions, comments, concerns? Dr. McFadden?
Yes, at the curriculum meeting, we did vet it. Curriculum personnel meeting, thank you very much. We did vet it, the hiring process, and discussed the credentials of Ms. Alma?
Yes.
Alma Gail. So we did go over that. So just want to make sure that comes out in the light.
Thank you. Any additional questions, comments, concerns?
Just a real quick question. Is she the Gails that live in town?
She's a baby. I was going to say that. Yes, she is a baby. All right, very good. Any additional questions, comments on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call roll, please.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Next, item B. Approve the hiring of a middle school CI teacher. Background information, increased caseload necessitated hiring of additional staff. Recommend action, recommend action is that Michelle Plummer as a middle school CI teacher effective August 28, 2018. Ms. Davis.
Yes, thank you. As you said, yes, the caseload has increased, and we need additional help. And Ms. Plummer also was a student teacher here last year. And she did outstanding work for the staff and everyone. After interviewing all of the others, everyone was still very impressed with the way she worked with our students. And she did come highly qualified, recommended by the staff for her to join our family permanently.
Recommend, recommended action is to hire Michelle Plummer as a middle school CI teacher effective August 28, 2018. The chair would entertain a motion relative to the agenda item.
So move?
Moved by Dr. McFadden.
Support.
Support. Ms. Escalante? Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor?
Mr. President, same process. Strategic Personnel Committee went over the resume, and everything looks good.
Thank you. Any additional questions, comments on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Item C, approve hiring of a high school math teacher. Background information, teacher resignation necessitate the hiring of a high school math teacher. Recommend action to hire Amanda Sizemore as a high school math teacher effective August 28, 2018. Ms. Davis.
Thank you. Yes, our math teacher moved closer to home. She found a job that was only a few minutes from her home. So she did resign, and that is why we have this position open. And after all of the vetting, Ms. Sizemore was the one that came to the top and becomes highly recommended by the interviewing team.
Thank you. Chair would entertain a motion relative to item C, hiring of a high school math teacher, Amanda Sizemore, effective August 28, 2018.
So move?
Moved by Dr. McFadden.
Support.
Second by Ms. Walker. Any questions, comments on the motion on the floor?
Same process, Mr. President. We value the superintendent's recommendation.
Any additional questions, comments on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Ms. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Item D, approve of hiring of a district staff accountant. Background information, a staff resignation necessitate the hiring of a district staff accountant. Recommend action, recommend action to hire Chris Young as the district staff accountant effective August 30, 2018. Ms. Davis.
Yes, again, we had a resignation. Our longtime accountant moved closer to home, found a job that was only a few miles away, and that opened, made an opening for our disposition. And after looking through several resumes and interviewing the young ladies, and I think we did have a couple of gents. But anyway, Chris Young comes highly recommended. She is doing the work in a different district, but our district is closer to home to her. And she had all of the right credentials that we need for this position. So we're recommending that the board approves her position.
The chair would recommend action is to hire Chris Young as a district staff accountant effective August 30, 2018. The chair would entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I move that we hire Chris Young as the accountant.
Moved by Mr. Voorhees. Is there a second?
Support.
Second, Ms. Escalante? Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call roll, please.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Ms. Escalante?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Item ten. Student slash parent handbook. Background information, publish a district-wide handbook for all students and parents. Recommended action, recommend action is to adopt the Mount Clemens Community Public School Student slash Parent Handbook. Mrs. Davis.
Okay. Working with the staff and with the board, we have come up with a handbook that we had. One that was unique to each building. One for middle school, one for high school, and of course, one for the elementary and for preschool. And we wanted to make sure that there was one handbook for the entire district that addressed each of the different grade levels. But there are a number of things that were also common to all levels. So we wanted to have a one-stop shopping for our parents. So what you have before you is the handbook. We, there, we also added an acceptable use policy agreement that all students and staff are to sign each year. And we wanted to make sure that that was in the handbook. And also, there's a place where parents to sign and students to sign to say that they actually received the book. So we wanted to have something nice for each, want to have in their own home and a reference throughout the year. So this is the handbook that we came up with. And we're requesting the board to approve it so that it will be sanctioned by the board. This is our standard.
Item ten is recommended action is to adopt the Mount Clemens Community Public School Student slash Parent Handbook. Chair would entertain a motion relative to agenda item.
I'll move.
Moved by Mr. Voorhees.
Support.
Second by Ms. Escalante. Any questions, comment, excuse me, questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor?
I believe that Christina will correct me if I'm wrong. I believe we covered this at, at the Policy Committee. We went over the, we went over it, even though I don't believe you have it.
It was in the package.
It was in the package, so we're all set.
Yeah.
Any additional questions, comments, discussion on the motion on the floor?
We, we also discussed, yes, in the Personnel Committee. Some wording changes, but Superintendent and her staff are gonna take care of it. So I know it's gonna be modified in this packet. So as is, it's fine until it gets modification. Still in progress.
Yes, we did address a couple of things that we wanted to make sure that it stood out that this was from, there's a guidelines from the state for immunization. We got what page it's on.
Page fifteen.
Fifteen, okay, yeah. So it's in there, we wanted to make sure. Which is actually page forty-six of the packet, but it is, in the handbook, it is page fifteen. So we put in the corner that it is as recommended by the Michigan Department of Education.
Any additional questions, comments, discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call roll, please.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Item eleven. Policies for second reading. First policy, zero one hundred definitions revised. Black background history policy revised update includes social media terminology. Recommended action, policy zero one hundred submitted for second reading and adoption. Chair would entertain a motion relative to policy zero one hundred as revised.
Mr. President, I move that policy zero one hundred be submitted for second reading and adoption.
Moved by Dr. McFadden.
Support.
Second by Ms. Walker. Any questions, comments on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Policy seventy-five thirty, lending of board-owned equipment revised. Background history, policy revised to change the description from district-owned to board-owned equipment. Recommend, recommendation policy seventy-five thirty be submitted as, for a second reading and adoption. Chair would entertain a motion relative to agenda item eleven B.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve policy number seventy-five thirty regarding lending of board-owned equipment.
Moved by Mr. Voorhees to approve policy seventy-five thirty, lending of board-owned equipment.
Support.
Second by Dr. McFadden. Any questions, comments on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call roll, please.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. And anytime any members of the Policy Committee want to chime in on anything, feel free. Policy seventy-five forty, technology revised. Policy seventy-five forty is revised to update the definition of comprehensive social media. Recommended policy seventy-five forty is submitted for second reading and adoption. Chair would entertain a motion relative to policy seventy-five forty.
Mr. President, I move that policy seventy-five forty is submitted for second reading and adopted.
Moved by Dr. McFadden.
Support.
Support, Ms. Escalante. Any questions, comments, discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Eyes carry the motion, motion carries. Next, policy D. Item D, I should say, policy seventy-five forty point zero two, web accessibility. Content, apps, and services revised. Background information, policy seventy-five forty point zero two is revised to update one-way communication and ADA compliance. Recommended policy seventy-five forty point zero two be submitted for second reading and adoption. Chair would entertain a motion relative to agenda item D, seventy, policy seventy-five forty point zero two.
Mr. President, I move that policy seventy-five forty point zero two is submitted for second reading and adoption.
Moved by Dr. McFadden.
Support.
Support, Ms. Walker. Any questions, discussions, comments on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Policy seventy-five forty point zero two is adopted. Agenda item E, policy seventy-five forty point zero four. Staff technology, acceptable use and safety revised. Background information, policy seventy-five forty point zero four is revised to incorporate the new social media policy. Recommended action, policy seventy-five forty point zero four be submitted for second reading and adoption. Chair would entertain a motion relative to agenda item E, policy seventy-five forty point zero four.
Mr. President, I move that policy seventy-five forty point zero four is submitted for second reading and adoption.
Moved by Dr. McFadden, is there a second?
Support.
Second, Ms. Escalante. Any questions, comments, discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, eyes carry the motion, motion is adopted. Agenda item F, policy seventy-five forty-four, use of social media. This was a new policy. Background information, policy seventy-five forty-four is a new policy to address social communications. Recommendation policy seventy-five forty-four is submitted for second reading and adoption. Anything come out of the committee since it was a new policy?
Mrs. Escalante, ain't thinking about it to me.
And no, this is basically to make sure we incorporate all of the new verbiage concerning social media. So it's just making sure it brought all of the different policies together.
Ms. Escalante, say it again, please?
That this was just making sure that we addressed all of the verbiage, the terminology of social media to make sure that all of the different pieces were connected. And so that was basically the definition of what the social media was. Because it used to be just the phones and all of that, but now we have Twitter and-
Facebook.
Yes, Facebook and all that, so that's what it was basically addressing.
Chair would entertain a motion relative to agenda item F, policy seventy-five forty-four, use of social media.
Mr. President, go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
Nope, please.
No, you go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we accept the policy number seventy-five forty-four for approval.
Moved by Mr. Voorhees, is there a second?
I will support him for that.
Second by Dr. McFadden. Any questions, comments on the motion on the floor, policy seventy-five forty-four? Hearing or seeing none, call roll, please.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, eyes carry the motion, the motion carries. Item twelve, informational item, July cash flow report. Are there any questions of the superintendent or any comments from the Business Committee?
Well, we were brought up to date on the cash flow situation. It seems to be okay. We have a little bit of a hit this month because we have to repay a loan. Was expected, but all seems to be in order.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments on the July cash flow report? Item thirteen, open purchase order listing. Any questions, comments, discussion on the open purchase order listing?
Here again in the committee, we were brought up to date on all the measures that we need to be. And right now is a quiet time. We look forward to a couple RFPs coming out in a couple of months, but right now it's quiet.
Any additional questions, comments on the open purchase, open purchase order listings? Item fourteen, contract listings. Any questions, comments, discussion on contract listings? Hearing or seeing none? Item fifteen, superintendent's comments.
Well, thank you. The summer has really gone by quickly and I hope our students are enjoying their last days because we are getting ready to greet them back for the new school year, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. Just a couple of comments. We did get a letter of thank you or card anywhere, thank you, and I just want to read it real quickly. It says, "A single act of kindness throws out roots in all directions and the roots spring up and make new trees." Amelia Earhart. And it's a note in here from Deb Caligari. She's a kindergarten teacher over at Seminole. And just thanking the board and all of the educational foundation members for helping to support the teacher many grants. And because they do apply for those grants and it helps them to be able to do a number of things in their classrooms that they're otherwise, get to do a few more fun things in the classroom. So we just want to thank Ms. Caligari for sharing this note of thank you with the board. And you should have a copy in your packet. Also, we have the football and volleyball schedules in your packet. We have a game coming up on August the twenty-fourth for football and also for volleyball. Volleyball is, the opponent is Harbor Woods and it's a home game at five o'clock. And then we have football on the twenty-fourth and that's Detroit Leadership. It's a home game and that's at seven o'clock. So we're looking forward to all of, everyone coming out to cheer our teams on. It should be a very fun night starting at five o'clock. Okay, so come out and support our students. Also, in your packet, we've given the board members the model for out of time, out of school time programs. And it was, this is the guideline for the Michigan Department of Ed. So we will be adopting some of this along with some other standards that we'll be requiring for our students and staff whenever we're traveling outside of the campuses. Board members also have a copy of the, it's a draft of our school calendar with a number of important dates on it and we will be updating this each month. And so right now, to look forward to in August, let's see, the Back to School Bash is on the twenty-third and that is from ten until two. So we're inviting all of the parents and students to come out and celebrate the Back to School Bash. We have lots of information for you and the students will receive their backpacks at that time as well. I want to thank all of our partners for joining us this year again with the Back to School Bash. September fourth is our first day of school, it's a half-day. So we're asking the students to, you know, get well rested up and change those bedtimes instead of staying up so late, you know, get in the habit of going to bed a little early. So your first day, you're coming cheery and bright-eyed and so we can welcome you all here. Teachers are due back on the twenty-eighth. And so board members, if you are able to join us on that first day, we would love for you to come out and join us to welcome our staff back on that day. And believe it or not, it's time for Optimus Club is inviting or reminding us about the Trunk or Treat 2018. And that will be held on October the twenty-seventh from noon to three. It's a Saturday. And they are asking folks to join up for that, so there's a flyer here to sign up for that. And that's it for my comments. No, one more thing. We are in the middle of our audit. We're working with our auditors to finalize that work. And they plan to finish up mid-September. And we will bring a report to you for the October board meeting. So we're excited to get that work done and out of the way. And that's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Committee reports. Ms. Walker, anything additional from the Business Committee?
I'm gonna ask Mr. Brewley to report for me this time because I was unable to make the meeting, so.
Anything additional, Mr. Brewley?
Uh, no, we covered all the business that was appropriate from that meeting already.
Thank you. Any questions out of the Business Committee? Policies Committee, the chair is not here, but if anybody wants to comment.
We met on-
No, you comment, no, you comment.
Would you like me to comment? Because I can let you, it's okay. We met on Wednesday last week, the eighth, around ten fifteen, I think, we started our meeting. It was short and sweet. We just kind of reviewed what you saw on the agenda tonight to push it through for second reading and adoption. So that's about it.
Any additional questions or comments? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. McFadden, curriculum personnel, any additional questions, comments, discussions?
Well, I sent out my agenda with my notes yesterday. I hope everybody got those and were able to understand those.
Ricky, Dr. Scratch.
It was like chicken scratch. Could make up some letters, but not many.
Well, I give curriculum update real quick. Thursday is speeding for eighth graders. They're doing a PSAT. The only thing they're gonna end up this year is the science, correct? Science. Talk about the new hires, no change in top six, no change in other matters. We're talking about engaging parents to stay involved, which is a Wall Street Journal article that came out. Student handbook, we discussed that in quite detail. And we looked at possibly getting with the superintendent or the Policy Committee with a hiring process, with a system for that. That was a great discussion with that. And we also discussed different situations, layoffs, finance, and personnel agreements. Did I miss anything?
You got it.
Mr. Brewley, I miss anything?
Uh, no, but I just want to reiterate the discussion about having a hiring process. I'm not sure we have one in our policies. And when we talked about the people that were hired here, that it was just the school principals' recommendations that we would like to see the curriculum director be involved. We would like to see a couple of teachers be involved. We would like to see a couple of teachers be involved and we would like to formalize it. So that there is a clear process with people involved. That's not to say they weren't involved now, but that we should have it written out so that we suggest that those people do do that. So we'd like to pass that along whatever way we can to the Policy Committee, take a look at that, come back to the board with that. And we also talked about the workshop.
Yes, we did. And I was gonna bring that up next.
And that's, uh, okay, we'll go.
Well, we talked about having a workshop, at least, uh, put a tentative date down on a monthly basis. And if something occurs where that workshop happens, something occurs and the report don't happen, we can make, we have enough room or we could run afire or misfire, see what happens on that. And the workshop is basically like matters like this, what we can talk about and bring it out as a group as a whole and just lock the date in for the month. So that's something we're gonna have to talk about and even if we want to make a motion tonight or anything of that nature, we need to put on the table and see what happens. But that's one thing we did talk about and we're gonna put a, get some control. Hopefully the blueprint might have some control on some of these situations, which is the hiring process. I don't know. I, I just dig it deep into this blueprint stuff now, so, you know, maybe Superintendent might have some insight on that.
And you're correct that, that the blueprint does address all of those issues of where we go about doing business for everything across the board and hiring practices would be a part of that.
So anyway, about the, um, I don't know how you want to perceive workshops.
I don't know what would be appropriate or how we do it out of committee reports, but with the suggestion was the superintendent, it'd be helpful if we had it maybe the week after the board meeting. Um, and just set that Wednesday and then we would know when the variance is or set it some other time around that week or whatever, just so we try to keep that night open. So if we decide to do it, it would be helpful when we could do it. The other thing we talked about is trying to get a handle on the next school year and that we would like to see some changes, at least a couple of us were at the meeting, um, in terms of how we begin the day and hours and to talk in an informal fashion and get the consensus and we do it or we don't do it, but to do it now, talk about it in September so that we're not talking about a month ahead of time. Um, and figure that out.
So if you, um, would like a workshop, workshop, I was just thinking maybe even the week before. So if there is something that came up that you want to add on the agenda, you wouldn't have to wait a whole month.
Yeah.
To take action.
Okay, I'm open to.
And the workshop is basically a lock-in date. So just declare, um, some clarity on that. It's a lock-in date, you know, like, okay, this is the date we will have a workshop. Usually we'll have a workshop. Doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be a workshop unless something, you know, pertinent, just as this discussion we had here. But we did talk about how the day should start, um, jumping ahead. What we, what we really discussed in personal curriculum is trying to get ahead of the game instead of saying next year. And that's something we've been holding back off on. So, I mean, do you want to make a motion on that or how does that usually work? I mean.
If there's a recommendation coming out of the committee, it can be, a recommendation come from a committee in the form of a motion.
Okay. Well, as this, as the committee chair, we move to have a once a mo-, uh, once a month, um, lockdown date for a possible, uh, board workshop the week before the regular board meeting. That's my motion.
Moved by Dr. McFadden to establish the Wednesday prior to our regularly scheduled board meetings to have a workshop if necessary.
Support?
Second by Ms. Escalante. Any questions, concerns, comments on the motion on the floor? Was, were there discussions about who would bring the discussion matters, uh, for the potential, uh, workshop sessions, uh, around that?
Yes.
Who or how?
Bring the topics.
How, who or how would establish the topic? Would we lay that up to the superintendent? Or do board members, you know, make suggestions? Was that thoughted out? Was that vetted out?
That would not be vetted.
Well, that, that's, that's my question to the motion on the floor. Anybody can address it. Just some.
I would think you need some type of process.
That, that, that's my question. It's a process question.
Yeah, that.
I don't, you know, just establishing every month, the, the Wednesday before the meeting to have a workshop. How, what is the process to, how do we get the information that we're gonna talk about if we're gonna have that, that meeting?
Right, right. Now, my motion is not to have a workshop. It's to set a date aside for a workshop. So if there's no need for a workshop, Superintendent don't have enough time in advance unless, well, there's no workshop.
But if we establish the Wednesday before as a workshop, that my, it's still, my question is who and how gets the topics to get on the works, to determine whether or not we have that, that Wednesday as a workshop? That's just a procedural thing, that's all.
Yeah, yeah. Do we have any blueprint with that?
Could it be a, a joint thing if, uh, there are topics that, uh, the members want to discuss? Uh, or if there are topics that I find that, uh, we need to discuss, I would pass it by the board president and.
So can we set a date, like, say, the Friday? So September, if we do this, that would mean that the twelfth would be the night of a possible workshop. So can we say that by the Friday before, like, the seventh, if no, if you don't have any information at all?
Right.
And none of us have contacted you, then, or you don't have anything to talk about, then we can, at least then we'll have a set.
Yeah, or if it come out of committee, um, we would like to talk about the issue of the school year and what we should do with structuring the day. I would personally not suggest it for September because that's opening schools, very busy, but I would suggest it for October. But that, okay, so you can bring it to the board meeting, uh, of the month prior or, because ours came out of discussion of committee. So that's what we said.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, we can even go as far as tabling this motion tonight and just bring it up at the next board meeting. Since we don't want to, we're not looking at September because it's such a busy month, we can just discuss this in the next board meeting. That's where we have more, and that's why I have more verbiage down on the exact motion, the verbiage to the location, the times and, you know, what's the, what's the procedures for it. Um, who seconded my motion anyway? You did? Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
So probably the best, best movement right now is to just table it to the next board meeting. Then we make the motion then.
So you move.
What's that, Mr.?
You want to table?
I want to take my motion off the floor.
First of all, you can't take it off the floor. Once it's been presented and seconded, it's up to the body, the group, what they do with it. And then, you know, if you want to table it, you can table and that takes precedent over everything. But the body can come to consensus to let you remove it from the table.
So if I move that we table this until the.
September?
What, September meeting?
If you move to table, I'll support you. If you move not to table it, I will not support you.
I love it. I, I remove this because I need Dave's support. I, I think we really.
How do we move, how do we move the table?
Because otherwise you're running the meeting and we don't.
We don't know.
It's gotta have some type of structure.
Yeah, it's just, my, my only concern and I don't, I don't mind, you know, the meeting, my only concern is how, you know, getting the topics to it.
Right, right.
Yeah.
So you moved to table?
Yes.
Is there a second? You second?
I, I, I second.
Are you second?
I'm gonna support. I support Glenn on that.
Any questions, discussion on the motion on the floor to table, uh, this discussion until the September meeting? He ain't gonna say none. Call role plays.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Monk? I'm sorry. Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes. Motion carries. The item is tabled until September. Darren, can you sub in for Patrick?
I have no information.
All right, good enough. Any questions? Legislative, there was no meeting. Dr. McFadden, Athletic Ad-Hoc Committee.
You know, there needed to be discussion after the ad hoc committee. We haven't had a meeting, uh, but we, uh, we do need a meeting because we need to figure out what's going on with the athletic program. Um, I, I ain't saying bad things or good things. I'm not saying by not pointing fingers or throwing rocks, but we need to get an idea.
The chair.
Of what?
Of the committee.
I'm the chair.
Call the meeting.
Oh, hold, 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 hold on, man.
Glenn is supporting.
Let me guess, let me guess. I'm on that committee. You have some background on this. We will have a meeting next month, okay? And I will get, I, I will reach out to my committee members and we'll set a date. You got it?
All right, thank you, sir. Educational Foundation, they have not had a meeting. Even though we got the guard thanking the Educational Foundation for their contribution, uh, to the classroom teachers and for their projects and that we gave out some money for the, um, the scholarships, the local scholarship, but we have not had a meeting to discuss anything. Unfortunately. Item seventeen, board comments. Ms. Escalante?
You always pick on me first.
Well, Ms. Walker.
No, you already said my name first. I get to go.
I changed my mind. Ms. Escalante.
I, I mean, I really don't even have much to say tonight. I'm just kinda tired, so. No, I just wanted to say I'm looking forward to this upcoming school year. Um, I'm tired because I've been home with three kids all summer. So I'm kinda ready to turn them over to the teachers, but I'll be around to help too, so don't worry. Um, but it's, um, I, I, I also want to say thank you to Jill for your presentation. I'm really excited about that program. I think that's gonna be really good for our students and their families. And also, um, to.
Sarah.
Sarah, she's not here, but, um, that quote from the gentleman that was speaking, "When you know your why, your what becomes more impactful because you're walking towards your purpose." That hit me personally. Um, it just makes sense. So, um, I think we all know our why. That's why we all sit here. And I think that this year our purpose is gonna have a lot more meaning as we continue on. So with that, once a bather, always a bather. Those are my comments, Mr. Rickman.
Thank you, Ms. Escalante. Mr. Brewley?
Um, I'm ready to go into executive session and get it moving here. We have to do that yet, right?
If they, you gotta show up.
I don't think there's anybody who can do that.
Ms. Walker?
Oh, it's my turn.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, school's just around the corner. I'm very excited for the Back to School Bash, which is the twenty-third. It's I, I have my color-coded calendar from ten to two, so looking forward to seeing all the kids and parents. And for people who think they want to come here and bring their kids to our district, you will not be disappointed. Come check us out. We are ready. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Mr. Voorhees?
Uh, I'll keep it short and sweet. This is, this is very nice. I like this. Uh, hopefully, uh, we'll discuss this in, at, at the Athletic, um, Committee. But, you know, I'd like, I sure would like to, and I spoke with you before about having some type of, uh, program or a pass out at the, at the football games with the names of the players. I think that we need to do that. Uh, if there's, if there's cost involved, contact me and we'll see what we can do.
Okay.
All right?
We're on it.
You know, all right, we're on it. That's right. Put that MC out there. And as we start the school year, Mary, tell your, your, uh, membership that we appreciate everything they do. You know, they, it's, it, being a educator is a tough job. And, uh, but they do a great job here and I think that, uh, more people need to take advantage of it. Putting my, uh, bather hat on, the Ninth Annual MCHS All-Class Reunion will be held Friday, September the fourteenth, at Fred Fox's Rec Bowl for the class of sixty-nine, who will be there at five. And we met six. Other classes, it'll run, it'll run till, till one A.M. So, uh, you know, we, we, we need our, we need our rest.
I understand. I understand.
And with that, once a bather, always a bather.
Thank you, Mr. Voorhees. Dr. McFadden?
Well, school's coming up. It's gonna be great. I know we have a football game August twenty-fourth, but there's also another game going that night. August twenty-fourth, our volleyball girls, the Lady Bathers, have a game against Harbor Woods Home right here. The Mount Clemens asking why I'm so passionate. Yes, my daughter's on the team, so I gotta promote her, come out and see her. Come out and see the team, support them. Um, other than that, you know, I'm looking forward to these new things that's going on this year. Looking forward to, you know, we're getting a lot done this year, I think we will. And, uh, God bless America. Those are my comments.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to start by saying, uh, in front of your table, we have the, uh, Mount Clemens Community School Board, uh, Conversation and Coffee. Uh, this was something that was discussed at one of our workshops and I sent a series of emails, uh, to board members to find out when people would be available. Um, this is a draft of something that we've come up with uh, just to, so you can see what we're looking at. We still, we still have to, you know, determine a time, date, um, and location for the first, uh, conversation. Uh, just want some, something you can look at and see that, um, we're working on that. And I will be contacting each of you, uh, again to, uh, so we, so we can fill in those dates and also come up with the, the conversation that we'll have with the public. Uh, we are aware that we can't have more than three board members at a session. We, we had talked about having a session in the morning and then one in the evening. And not, we don't want one board member there. We'd like to have a minimum of two, but a maximum of three. Uh, and I've gotten excellent response from, from the board in terms of, uh, representation of when, when certain people can be certain places. So we're getting real close to that and just a little few more things to hash out and we'll be well on our way, uh, to our, our first, uh, coffee and conversation, conversation, coffee, whatever we decided to call it. We just threw that out there, uh, as an example. Like to say, uh, thank you to Mrs. Yor for her continued efforts and collaboration and partnerships, uh, with the district. Um, we, I, I look forward to, uh, the I Choose program. Looking forward to hearing some great things about that because I, I really feel that this is something, uh, that's a silent killer in, in our, in our, in our kids. Um, and, uh, folks don't want to talk about it, um, for a plethora of, of reasons. Uh, but the way it's being channeled, channeled out here at Mount Clemens, no one is put on the spot. No one is saying, oh, you're one of those kids that's in that program. And, and so it, hopefully we'll get a, a good reaction from our parents and our, and our, and our students, uh, to come involved because there, there are probably plenty of students that could take advantage of this and, and turn around their lifestyles and become healthier lifestyles. The blueprint, um, I've, I've heard about the blueprint for a couple, three, four, five years. Uh, but the missing piece was where does the board thought come in context with, with that whole thing? There's a lot of conversations about student achievement and things of this nature that is talked about outside of inclusion of the board members. But that's a board, as a board, that's our number one objective is to increase student achievement. That's why we're here. So to, to finally, somebody realizes, hey, the board has an integral, important role in this whole student achievement process. And the blueprint looks like it's something that's reaching out to encompass and engage board members to collaboratively, collaboratively work with their staffs and the teams up from the school district, uh, to put some meaningful processes together that will warrant student achievement. And, um, I'm, I'm excited about uh, the potential and possibility, uh, that the blueprint, uh, can bring, uh, by with the input from the, from the district's, um, uh, teaching staff, administrative staff, and now with, with the, with the board. Um, there, last month, my colleagues were talking about, oh, it's getting ready to be school time. And I said, I wasn't gonna talk about that because it was July. That was last month, you know. Here we are, a little more than two and a half weeks, uh, before summer is gone. And I've only had two weeks of summer. And, uh, that's not fair because I get six months of winter time. So I'm kinda mad that I'm doing the summer, but I can't do anything about that. So, I'm kind of mad that I'm doing this summer, but I can't do anything about that. Parents are getting worn out with their kids at home. We've heard one testify here tonight at their board table, and they're ready to throw their burden off on a well, well-equipped, highly qualified, able, professional teaching staff. So, to those folks that are capable, able, and well-qualified teaching staff, I say to you, enjoy the rest of the few days that you have left, you know? Get in the convertible, let the top down, let the air run through your hair, go to the beach, you know, it's too late to probably go on a, on a cruise. But we look forward to seeing the teachers here August the 28th, and then the students here September the 4th, bright and early, fired up and ready to go for a phenomenal beginning of the 28, 2018, 2019 academic school year here in the Mount Clemens Public, Mount Clemens Community Public School District. Those are my comments. I think I have not forgotten anything. Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Walker. The attorneys didn't show up.
Oh?
They have a call.
Yeah, they said they were.
That's why I kept moving the meeting.
Yeah, no, no, I thought it was some other reason. Okay.
Yeah, they, they never showed up after communicating with us that they wanted to be on his, on the agenda. We had to rebook them. Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn. Ms. Walker?
So moved.
Moved to adjourn. Is that a second? Mr. Voorhees second to adjourn. Any questions, comments on the motion on the floor? Hearing and seeing none, call a roll, please.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Ms. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Bruley?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes. Motion carries, meeting adjourned at 8:25 in the PM. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. My hammer.